Really?
Recording progress.
I'm sorry to shock you.
Oh, it just hit the record.
Oh, it was on before, probably like...
Try to stop playing?
Yep, you can spell tips right now.
Recording in progress.
Okay, first order of the day is a public hearing for sewer rate increase of two and a half percent for the November 2022 billing. And one thing I want to say on this, this rate increase is not anything to do with the sewer plant upgrades, basically it's to replenish our sewer reserves so we have a decent sewer reserve if we have a major problem someplace else in the sewer system, pump station go down or something. We gotta have the funds to be able to make the repairs, keep everything up and running. So I'd like to motion to open the public hearing on...
I'll make them up here.
Approval of... Minutes of November 17th.
I make a motion that we approve minutes of November 17th, board meeting.
I'll second.
Call favor?
Aye.
Close?
Approval of vouchers. General fund, sixteen thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents. Law, twenty-four thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. Sewer, nineteen thousand, thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Capital, seven hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. They have all been audited and I recommend, I will make a motion for them to be paid.
I'll second. Call favor?
Aye.
Close? Five Streets Utility Reconstruction Project. You have anything on that, Matt?
Um, no, not really, Joe. We've, um, we've searched for a lot of cleanouts and, and water shell offs, we found, you know, we found a lot of them. Uh, we will, uh, we're working on a draft of the ASBills now. Uh, we're, we'll go back to highlight here with that and see if they have any information they want to add to it, uh, but you guys should be seeing a draft of that over the next few weeks.
The only thing I have on that, the office has been pretty busy working on getting the long-term bonding wrapped up on that project so we can have it closed out by the end of December.
And I think, Joe, as far as we know on anything we've seen, we've been getting those questions when EFC comes up, well, we've been getting them answered because we've got Austin Jeff Smith from Municipal Solutions.
Okay, Phase Two Wastewater Treatment Plan Upgrades.
So, um, the electrician has been working there for the last few months. He's finishing up the conduits for the main building, the blower building. Uh, he, he still has to run all those wires and make the connections, but the conduits are, are permanently done. Henderson Brothers has been, they're a, they're a subcontractor of NCC, they've been working in the blower building. They've demoed that floor and they're preparing to pour the foundation of the new blower. Um, that should, that foundation should go in next week and then they'll work on FRP and insulation starting sometime next week. I think you have a couple of pay applications also for, for that project. Payout number one for NCC, I think it's over three for Spencer.
I think Spencer was...
Yeah, like I said, we had two of them, uh, one for... Our company contractors and one for SC Spencer, they're in tonight's capital. Pat?
Okay.
Is that it on that, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, everything, I think everything's going pretty well out there. It seems to be, uh, pretty smooth. Kind of a weird time to be starting a project, but, uh, you know, it's all about availability and manpower and they seem to want to be out there, so...
Well, weather-wise and everything, it looks like it's been going good so far.
Yeah, yeah. And I think with the way construction is going now everywhere in our world, if, if you have people that are willing to work, we should, we, we need to be able to take advantage of it. Having the contractors seems to be the biggest problem in, in our market.
Okay, how do we stand on the groundwater project?
We're working on the design there, we're trying to get a submission back to the health department this month. Um, Blue Line Engineering and, and I were up there with Seth this week doing some bench testing, uh, some chemi, some chemistry testing on the water, uh, raw and finished water samples so we can try to calibrate the size of the equipment we need for the treatment. Um, so we're, we're working on that and we're preparing to get that back to the health department. You have any questions on that, Joe?
No. Street lighting LED conversion program, well, if anybody's drove by the sewer plant, I see the big four painters down there, that's got all the equipment for new LED streetlights. Part of the problem is we're the staging area for all the other municipalities and, uh, I know Paul was talking with Mickey today and we think they're, they're still working over the garbage area, so it'll be a little while before they get to Laval, but it's ongoing and the guys are usually out of there by seven or a little after every morning once they get their trucks loaded up. So eventually we'll see them hanging some new lights here in Laval. Anything else on that, Mickey?
Mickey there.
He, he said he's gonna be in and out, he's doing another Zoom one too, so, but that's...
I'm on my way to here.
Oh?
Uh, sorry, I just got hit the mute button and it disappeared, obviously. Sorry to remind myself. It was over last week and they're in Partham's and just about one morning they'd already completed two streets, so I don't know if they moved on to the next yet or not. Um, but they said things were going really well and they were planning on having one more crew showing up, I think, this week, uh, to be starting to help out, so I expect things will start moving pretty quickly.
Res zoning of industrial zone options. That was sent to Joe Russell, right? Did you get any...
No, yeah, I sent a copy of it, but there has been another meeting set up, it's not until next Wednesday, I just found out actually yesterday. And it's gonna be Zoom, so anybody that wants to attend, it'll be me and Cassandra and Megan and Matt from Toquill. Uh, so if you want the information, I can send it to you. If not, I'll just report back, but it's at two o'clock next Wednesday. In fact, I can send it to all the board members and if you choose to, and Joe, and if you choose to attend and, and Paul, whoever wants to attend, if you choose to, you can just listen in or whatever, yeah.
We're still looking at your original one, right?
Yeah, we're still looking at that, yeah. So... That's what's going on. I'll send it out to everybody. Anybody interested, I guess, can just get out and look in and talk if you want or just listen.
We just opened a public hearing on the sewer rate increase, but I'm gonna go by that one for a little bit, go down the village code update, and I know Danielle's been back and forth with emails trying to get some answers on that.
Yeah, so I heard from Mary Beth today, there's a section for local law seven dash 2021, which is the law to abolish the village justice. There is four code sections, I guess, that reference the village justice, two of them, we knew we could just kind of wipe out the whole section stating the village justice because it was for salaries and things like that. There are two code sections I sent to Joe Russell, um, just in terms of how we kind of reword it, if we're gonna put, you know, whether it's gonna be town justice now or whatever the proper terminology would be, so he said he will have an answer hopefully for me tomorrow. Once I get back to Mary Beth on how those have to kind of be restructured or reworded, then she can finalize the quote. There are no new laws or legislation changes, so at this point, whatever she currently has, well, the last time we talked to her, nothing's changed since then, so it'll just be to update everything through December 31st of 2021. And then you can decide, you know, going forward, if we're gonna do it every three months, six months, or, you know, I guess we're trying to see how the year pans out with law changes and stuff, then we can decide when we want to update it accordingly. So hopefully I'll have a quote before the next meeting. I was supposed to have one a couple of weeks ago, but now she's saying it's because they don't know how to change these couple code sections, which I don't really know how that, it's gonna make that big of a difference, but that's what she's telling me, so hopefully tomorrow I'll, um, be able to get in touch with her.
I think you want to be very accurate with your quote.
I guess so. Not a bad estimate.
That'd be a...
Well, the plan is to...
Yes. Yep, all the village codes and then all the new ones are there as well.
Yeah, I'll do the logic and see if there was that updated.
Basically, the plan is to get it updated soon.
Oh, there's Joe, yeah, so he'll let me know.
I'm here, so. So I'll take a look at what she said, get back to her tomorrow, we'll get that piece resolved.
Sounds good.
Okay, new business. Craft surcharges for November 2021, there was zero, we need nothing on that. That's on the sewer and there was no water surcharges for November either.
Just to give you a little information, um, Joe, myself and Danny went to Craft last week, maybe last week, and I had a meeting with Craft, um, to inform them of our possible two and a half percent sewer increase. And, uh, like we normally do, we give them an advance and we talked a little bit about the water. Um, everything is going good, they're averaging roughly around eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty gallons a day, so I think, uh, things are working smoothly.
No, just for clarification from the financial end of that, that's the November billing, when we would build the residential ones, but the commercial ones, they, that would start at the beginning of the billing cycle, right?
That starts in May.
It would be May, yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
That was another reason we wanted to meet with all industrial...
One of the things that I'd like to see happen, uh, I think the meeting with Craft was very good. I've been thinking about this, we ought to have an open house and plan a date where we can have people come up and see our water filtration plant. Mr. Lee would like to see it many years ago, he'd like to see it again, and I've had a few legislators tell me they've never seen it, would like to see it, so I think an open house and set a date, or maybe have two so that they can make one, there's another one, it could be just very informal. But I think, I think to gain a real appreciation of the village of Laval's water system, you have to see that plant or you really don't have a true scope of what it is. He still probably won't, but at least he'll see the enorm, the enormity of it.
I remember years ago, I think it was Dr. Yourself, or the, that open house at the plant, that particular day.
We had an actual village beating up there once, uh, in maybe year 2001 when I was mayor. We had to have special permission because it was outside of the limits of the village, hoping that we'd have a large attendance and at that time, only, only one person attended, and that was, uh, Scott Gray's son. We also had dedication for Harold Wolschler, uh, which was well-attended, that was well-attended.
I think, I think we could do it with the legislators as far as opening it up to the public, I don't think we can. I'd have to look into it because we're only in security.
I'm just gonna say there's some security.
But as far as I would imagine, the Lewis County legislators would get into that, but I can check into that.
Okay, we've got a couple of reappointments. I'd like to reappoint Joseph Zaire as chairman of the municipal board through 12/31/2026. Second on that?
I'll second.
Call favor? I'd like to reappoint Henry Avalon to the Planning and Zoning Board through 12/31/2026. And I'll second that motion, call favor?
Aye.
Okay, music in the park, the reason I asked Danielle to put that back on, uh, for getting on her new business, I know Dan's been working on grant money and things, but he, people kind of got back to him and there, it looks like there's still a chance for some grant money next year, but they're trying to hope in that the village could infuse some funds to go along with their funds. And so I said to Dan, even though we, that I thought we could possibly come up with a couple of thousand dollars in our budget this coming year, then he could go ahead and tell the people he's working with, that's the amount of money we'd be putting on. So I just want to run the board's agreeable with that. I mean, it was a good program last year and what COVID does this year, hopefully it'll be bigger and better next year.
What's the, does anybody know the allotment for the, we give them a lot more for the village band, right?
Four thousand dollars.
Four? Okay.
There used to be five when they got dropped down to four.
And I think like Dan's said in the past, uh, Dan's planning on doing more things up there than the concert series, with maybe the fire department.
We don't want to do a lot of changes that seem to work well. I've had, I've had some discussions with the fire department and I think they might be on board with doing a couple of the new ones. Uh, one of the things I want to attempt to do this year on one, on one of the earlier nights when we have more daylight hours, is have two bands, uh, on one, one of the nights, probably the opening night or maybe the second weekend. But other than that, uh, I don't see too many changes. I'd like to see the same roster of bands because a lot of people think that it should be local bands and I know a problem with that, there's a couple of bands that we didn't have last year that are local that we may add to the roster. We can't have Fred Niedz because they've retired, so there's gonna be an open slot there, so, um, it was fun and, and I think it came off better than I ever thought it was gonna, so I hope we can do it again this year, I think we'll be able to.
But I guess I'm just asking for the approval so to say that, yes, Dan can tell them, we'll make sure that we get...
Is that inappropriate, Al? Does that work?
Um, I was hoping, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to talk with Joe ahead of time, I was hoping maybe we'd go to twenty-five hundred, but, uh, twelve-two would work. Twenty-five, if, if Pratt Northam graciously matches that, that gives us five. I have about a thousand left over, so that could give us six to work with and we could use up to that if, if we wanted to enhance a little or we have some as a holdback for next year. And if we have two or three thousand as a holdback, for whatever reason, because we're able to negotiate better, then we, we don't even really have to ask for much next year or maybe we do it ourselves, you know? I'm, I'm very pleased that Pratt Northam did what they did and, uh, I think they're willing to help us again this year, but I think, I think one of the things that they have said, and I, and I agree with it, is they give, but they don't want to be a line item budget and you can't, that's, that's fair, that is fair, more than fair. Aren't the ARPA funds available to use for that, for recreation too, is, wouldn't you consider that a creation?
I know I talked with Danielle, that's one thing I was thinking, we could not possibly take it from there because it's, you can use it for recreation and like... Recreation, so... But I didn't want to tell Dan to go ahead and tell him we're gonna give him this money without the board knowing about it. I just think, like as Dan said, it's a good program last year, but we should at least run it another year and see how it goes. I mean, I don't think we need a motion or anything on that, Joe, does it, long as we're in agreement to make sure we put money in the budget for that when we do our budget here come January, February?
Yeah, I think as long, yeah, I think as long as the money's in the budget, they're good.
I would, the only thing I would request then is if I could tell Pratt Northam and Cassandra tomorrow that, uh, that will be a budget, I mean...
Yeah, that's what I wanted, what I wanted you to get...
No way that it wouldn't fly if the budget got moved down, I don't see that happening.
You just gotta clarify the amount, right?
Yeah, either two thousand or twenty-five hundred, whatever the board would like to do.
Yeah, leave that up to the board. I vote for twenty-five hundred myself.
Myself too.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to have that in form of motion, Mr. Russell? The amount?
Well, you know, I would, I would suggest you do a motion just so you got enough record.
Being, being that early in the process, I would praise it to say I'm suggesting that we put twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget for 2022. Like you said, if we don't, if we don't have, if the budget for some reason gets tweaked or changed, I mean, we're gonna have to, that's gonna...
Well, this, this is gonna be in the 2022 budget.
2022, right.
Which, which hits our fiscal year right with the first band away. Well, no, fiscal budget first, so our band would be from option 28, so. And what I would tell Pratt Northam and whoever is, that if, if for some reason we didn't have, obviously, whatever they grant funded to us, we need to back. I guess if for some reason something falls through or whatever.
You can consider that a motion, Tim, give a second, Charlie.
Aye.
All in favor on that?
Aye.
Aye. Chemical bid results.
Got paper in the packet, um, all go down the floor now, but as you can see, this is for the water and the wastewater plants. Slack had all the chemicals except for polyalumina chloride, which Holland Company got.
I must have forgotten, I double-sided everything, so.
Do you know what Holland Company's on?
No, I do, but I don't.
No, it doesn't matter, I guess.
But Slack had all of them last year, the year before, Holland Company actually won the bid for the polyalumina chloride, so we've doubled them in the past.
Does it behoove us, when everything else is so close, to order everything to Slack all or not?
Looks like Slack's a little bit underneath them on that polyalumina chloride or not?
No.
Or...
No, Slack's above them.
Okay, so about twenty-six, six there?
Twenty-six, nine versus twenty-four.
Twenty-six and a half cents versus twenty-four, right.
Right, okay. What's the twenty-three underneath that?
That's for if they had seventy thousand pounds.
Oh, gotcha.
The more you, the more you get, the cheaper it is.
I'll make a motion that we accept the bids for everything that Slack has committed, has, uh, given to us, except for the polyalumina, which I'll make them, I'll continue with the same motion, that that be given to Holland Company operating.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
River Area Council of Government's newsletter. Any questions on that, or Mickey, do you have any thing you want to add to that? No, no questions, well, move on. Laval Fire Department, annual monthly banquet, if anybody's interested, there's a phone number you can call and you need to get ahold of them before January 3rd. Sounds like it's gonna be good. All right, Officers Committee reports, anything, Billy DeCortney, anything?
No, I have nothing else, Joe.
I've got a couple of things here, up on the four corners where we got the clock, they've been decorating that up, it looks pretty nice, you go by there, like Christmas, but I had a phone call today and a group that's been putting those lights and things up, they talked with the radio station across the street and everyone play Christmas music there throughout the day and, uh, they were wondering if it was gonna be all right to put a speaker up there so they could, and I said I'd bring it before the board and let them know. I also told them that, which they didn't know, that that clock can play Christmas music and, uh, Mr. Bora has got the manuals on that and the tool to get into it to make the adjustments, so they may relook at that, but just wondering, if not, the board's agreement would let them, let the radio station put a speaker on, play music.
I'd always say to them there, that, uh, if they want to use the clock, use the clock, if they want to put a speaker up, put a speaker up, make sure it's secure and that the volume is adjusted correctly, is turned off at a certain hour at night, and if we have, the businesses feel that it's disadvantageous because of noise, you know, we might have to discontinue.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a great idea.
What time at night do you think, Dan?
I don't even think it should go that late.
No, nine, nine or eight.
I would think maybe eight o'clock at the latest.
I think it's a nice idea, it's almost too late, they do it, they should, they want to really get rolling.
Years ago, I remember when I was a kid, we used to come to Laval all the time shopping, and then Christmas time, oh my God, a couple of weeks before Christmas, maybe three, all the stores were open to nine o'clock Monday through Friday, right straight through, and there used to be Christmas music playing throughout the buildings.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
I remember it too.
Santa Claus, Santa Claus used to go across the four corners.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, I'll let her know, uh, they don't take, don't take the clock over when they can put the speaker up there. Okay, another issue that's come up is down here on Water Street, uh, tractor trailers, one's parked along in front of his house three years, now we got another one parking down on the corner, and the problems arising, especially the one down on the corner, backing right over our, number one, they're both backing over nice brand-new sidewalks that were put in there on this Five Streets project, but number two is they're backing over the sewer cleanout.
The number two is they're backing over the sewer cleanout down on the, near the corner. And also the water curb stop pushing them right down into the ground and damaging them. So Paul and I would like to write him a letter and tell him I can't be parking on the sidewalk down there. But I'll put it before the board and see what they'd like us to do.
I think we basically have a law in place right now such as you can't park on sidewalks.
And I mean, like I say, the one gentleman's doing it for years, but...
And a little bit of his defense, they can get around him, ask him.
No matter who's walking up the street, they gotta go on the road to get out.
Yeah, they gotta walk around them. They can't stand the sidewalk because they're right on the sidewalk. I mean, the one, I don't know about the new one.
The new one, they can't.
When I say the one, I don't, the reason we haven't been getting water and sewer damage there is because it's all concrete and block top. Down below is, they're straddling the sidewalk and the tools are going right over the, our tiddies.
See if we can work with them first, because it's their livelihood, but in fairness to us...
I thought I was writing a letter and hopefully try and do it peacefully there.
Well, maybe, I'd be willing to know if somebody in visit home, if you want to do that too, Joe, or whatever you want to do, try to work with them first.
What's the, what's the deal as far as, I mean, Billy Jones is the right way there anyway, correct? Accurately?
Technically, yes.
Certain distance beyond the sidewalk, possibly.
Kind of in your location, yeah.
Does it create any kind of a site distance issue?
No.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Joe?
Well, I, we probably have some of the village reports, but I mean, I think your suggestion about doing a letter and writing it or dissolve them, I believe that's first. And if they don't then, we'll take a look at the statute, the village votes, see what we want to do.
Is that the way you want to go in? I'll go that way. Okay, another thing that's come up. Anybody got any other questions on that before I move on? As you all know, we put dump truck and sander on Auctions International. And we put it back up and it came back in and the high bid was fifty thousand, two hundred dollars. And needless to say, Paul and I felt it still was low. That truck should be worth somewhere between seventy, seventy-five thousand, way it sits. If you were to look and see what some that are older are selling for. Well, one of the bidders ended up sending us a, basically, we found it stuck to the bulletin board. Said he was a high bidder. He must have been the one that bid fifty thousand, two hundred. He's a local bidder. And he, basically, he's saying that he would have had to pay a ten percent fee to the auction company and everything. And with the board declining, basically, we declined his winning bid. He's still interested in the truck, but he's willing to offer the board directly sixty thousand for it. But I say, I don't think that's about ten thousand too low. And Paul and I felt we'd just run it through this winter and then possibly next spring or summer, put it back up on auctions. But I wanted you to know that he sent this, could have been lost to see.
I don't know if you can do that. I don't think we have to reject the bid and rebid it even though he's offering more. Because maybe at that point, somebody else would be willing to do it. So, yeah, I tell you, Paul, let's, let's keep it for now and use it for the winter. Probably that it's only going to be worth fifty, but that's okay.
I mean, it's a board decision. I mean, it's not really mine, that's why I say, I mean, Paul, my suggestion was we just wanted to see this winter and, and re, do it. Was I right? But I wanted to know that we've gotten that.
Has equipment like that raised in price like other used vehicles and stuff for?
I don't, I don't...
You're trying to be worth more than straight?
But I figure we paid, we paid roughly a hundred and seventeen thousand for it in two thousand seventeen.
And a slow mileage. It's got eleven thousand miles on it.
What was the reason you wanted to give that?
I saw, I saw a two thousand sixteen.
It's tough to use in the...
The two hundred thousand went for sixty thousand.
Two hundred thousand miles.
And auctions can be funny things. You can, you can get more, like you said, we could get more in the springtime. You don't know from month to month, but you just don't know. You know, auctions are different things. Sometimes it goes higher, sometimes it goes lower.
And I'm sure if everybody's been following the newspapers and looking on New York State's website, the DRI program looks like it went to Messina and Tupper Lake. And so I'm thinking, if they have a round six next year, we want to think, I'm pretty sure we will want to apply. But I'm also wondering if we need to look hard and talk to different people out there and maybe get one or two more. I mean, we had some good projects for the project, of more independent, I would say, investors that might want to do a business or something. I'm almost wondering if we have too much emphasis on, I hate to say it, the double play of rails to trails. Because I know when we had the talks with Empire State Development, both years, they questioned those two projects a lot, so. I don't know, I just, I thought, I thought we had a winner this year. I was just surprised.
Are they relative projects? That's what they question, or?
I always looked at Tupper Lakes. I've looked at some of the other ones.
So by, I'm hearing it, Joe, but I just, so you're thinking like more of a diversity as far as the, yeah. I think that's what you're saying, yeah. It's almost the, so like, yeah, so if developers, independent people wanted to say, let's look at like the Tops Plaza, something like that, like, you know, McDonald's building, that came up on the comprehensive plan, that sort of thing or whatever. Somebody wanted to develop some, but what you're saying is outside money, private money.
Like an outside developer.
I don't think the Tops Plaza was in that downtown initiative area.
No, it is not, but I mean, like, one area, I'd, I'd like to try and find a developer that would be interested in. Down where the houses burn. I could just vision a really nice retail establishment on the first floor.
I thought they had something in that area. They didn't have something in that area this time?
Just up above where the Maltese Sun building is. That was gonna get all revamped, revamped through there. And then Tug Hill Roasters was, was gonna do some things. And speaking of Tug Hill Roasters, just for the board's information, they're looking at doing a possible fifteen-year pilot. It hasn't been a, I know they've applied. I know the town stopped it. And it's not too bad a deal. I meant to print it out and bring it in so everybody could see it. But basically, it's one speed for the first five years and the next five years, they go doubles and then triples. And the third, five years, and then at sixteen, it was the full assessment. And as far as the villages, I'm not one fond person for pilots, but in this instance, that property is tax exempt, so we're getting nothing. So I just assume they'll have a pilot and start getting something.
I, I don't like pilots as a general rule, but based on that, yes. It would be nice to get something versus nothing. And I think that's, I think that'll complement the downtown real well. I think, I, I like cafe Z. I don't know that it'll affect cafe Z much because they have their own and these guys are gonna make coffee. I just, I like the idea.
And a couple of things on our, we got a water grant and a sewer grant. And I know I was looking online, I showed Paul and I, we were looking yesterday, yeah. I thought we didn't get awarded either one, but I might have been looking at a different, they've got so many different grant areas. But I got actual information back from Jeff Smith, gentleman in the Solutions that did the grants for us. And it says, Joe, the CFA grants were announced and E S D grant for the water project was not among the awarded projects. So we did not get awarded that grant. And he says, the wastewater treatment plant, phase two WQIP grant announcements did not come out yet. We expect to hear about them in a week or two. We still need to hear on the sewer plant. But I was surprised we didn't get the water grant, but... And the only other thing I want to talk about quick is, when it comes to us, like myself and mayor and the trustees, we've been different projects going on and I know people have come to some of the trustees, they can you help us do this, do that. They gotta be careful out there that we don't get involved in what basically be conflict of interest. When people are talking to you about trying to help out with a, with a project or something, take a close look, make sure it's something we can do without being in conflict of interest. And other than that, I guess I will pass it on with great pleasure.
Um, I don't really have anything. We did get our first bad money yesterday for phase two. So we do have that to make, the penance for those payouts that we received from S C Spencer and North Country Contractors. Um, we're still waiting on the long-term financing for the five streets water, so.
Do you have anything from Chief?
No. Superintendent, nothing. Capitol, could you add?
Um, we talked just briefly about the money for the music, about Paul, just a friendly reminder too to, about the time that would finance tour or whatever. I can talk to Paul and Randy and Danielle as far as that goes, as far as what items they might want to look at for budget stuff. Comprehensive plan, that's kind of in the newsletter we got from Ray Cag as well, so. The final draft is all done. They're just working on the implementation of it and how that works, so. I think, Joe, you got an email from Doug O'Comeson on that. That was, I think, like a couple of weeks ago. So other than that, nothing else, no, yeah.
And the other thing is, on a comprehensive plan, they're gonna have a public hearing for that, I believe the schedule's for January fifth. And it's also gonna be on Zoom if anybody wants to zoom it. Anybody would like that information, let me know and I'll forward that in to you.
Yeah, I'll hand it to you if you want. I might have got it myself. I'll double check too, if, if they've got, if they've got...
Personnel, Paul and I would like a short, hopefully a short executive session. Paul, you're good now?
Yes, we're all good.
Finance?
Um, I've got to do the vouchers and audits tomorrow. I'm on a half-day off, so. Other than that, I'm good.
Leasens, fire department?
Tended their last meeting. I don't know if Joe asked to bring up anything. Lot, lot of discussion, a lot of good discussion, and I know there's gonna be a meeting next month and, and a court meeting. So I don't know that I want to say too much right now. So we'll just, we'll just leave it at that and things, things in the fire department are doing very nice, very well, very well.
Yeah, you're pretty busy over this last weekend, weren't you?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I want to thank Paul and his crew too for being answered my call for some barricades when I needed some, so I get my trucks out to other places, so. It was helpful.
Police department, anything there? Planning and zoning board?
Nothing other than...
Municipal board? They didn't have a meeting.
Didn't have a meeting?
Didn't have enough. Tell them?
I'm gonna go to work in the morning.
Yep. Tell them. Anything I need to tell them?
Oh, I'm sorry. Other than what you've seen about rails, trails, I really don't know.
Recreation, I think everybody knows what was going on there, hopefully, as I read it in the papers, seen the news. The skating rink was supposed to open. We had the power outage, the ice melt, it's now, we're gonna wait for colder temperatures and rebuild the ice and then hopefully we'll be back skating. Have you heard anything different?
No.
Mayor, one, one thing that I want to ask. And we have a personnel issue in the police department that I know three of the board members are aware of, maybe all five. If the other two aren't, should we have a short executive session to bring them up to speak?
On which one's that?
The second one. The second one.
Oh, okay. All right.
Do you know what we're talking about, Tim?
I think so.
Do you have?
Don't think so.
Shall we?
Anybody have any questions on the River Area Council? Do you have anything you want, Mickey? I, I guess we need to go back.
The only one thing I'm here about is Tug Hill Commission, local government conference. I know some of you guys have attended that in Florida. It's actually a Turner Stone.
A big turning stone, I should add.
So I could change things because it's a little distance away from here.
Yeah. Not personally, Tim, I'm actually, I, I just can't hear very well on my speaker thing, but if there's anything that you need, I mean, just let me know.
It'll depend where the poll goes, too.
Yeah.
Kind of feeding.
Might want to go a couple of days early then.
Hey, I've been to a couple of things, they've had down there in the food phenomenon.
Oh, sure.
All right, back to sewer rate increase for November twenty twenty-two, two and a half percent. Need a motion to pass that increase?
Should we have to close the public hearing first?
Oh, yes, thank you. Do you need a motion to close that?
I'll link the motion.
Second on the public hearing?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry, now we need to walk through the taxes.
Sounds like your answer was on board or a good meeting, so.
They said if they had any questions, they'd get ahold of us and that's, that almost would be...
What's, what's that total, the income shakeout here for the store itself, to me?
I have to look. We just did filling, not my last...
So if it's, even if it's a million, we're talking, uh, five thousand. Roughly, I think the average home will see about a three or four dollar increase. And once I'm way off on the figures roughly, we'd crack, it would be about eight to ten thousand. That could be off, but in a scheme of things, that's not, that's not a lot. And what, I think our budget, our balance right now on that accounts like forty? Forty to fifty, I think, is the figure that I heard.
I mean...
Sewers, yeah.
They're already getting a break now, Dan. Don't forget that.
Yeah, I know, I know. That's what, I'm not against it. I'm not against the, I'm gonna vote for the, for the increase.
That, that was projected.
Yeah. But we don't, if we have an emergency, we're, we're really rolling the dice right now. So I'll make the motion for the two and a half percent increase to the sewer effective November first for the residential and May first for the commercials. Which is the second, because residential's built for May of November.
That's where it's always been. You have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, closed. Okay, now we'll come back to public comment. Anybody have anything? Okay, I guess we'll have, need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the personnel issue.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.